Okay, I think we can begin.
Yes.
Great. I would like to call this meeting of the city council's order and I will read the land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Lejeune. We acknowledge that the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney Tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which has transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Here.
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 City Clerk, I think you need to flip the switch next time you talk. Okay.
Great. Thank you. We are now going to go straight into agenda item number three, which is our city council team building session. There will be time for a public comment later on. And our first item is a welcome from me and the city manager. So I'll be brief. I'll just say thank you to the city manager for putting this together and making sure that we had this. I think it will be helpful for us having a good working council going forward and I'm looking forward to it.
Nicole, would you like to make some comments?
First of all, Council, thank you for your flexibility in the meeting arrangements as I reach for the microphone here. Really just thank you for your time here today. I know all of you uniquely with this council have other responsibilities during the day, so I appreciate that we're taking a chunk out of your day today. And I hope and I know that it will be paid forward as the council works together as a team and works with staff and really just sets that foundation for all the work that we want to do positively for the city. So I welcome Sean Spano here with us today, who I know the council has had an opportunity to connect with to some degree, to forward our mission together and respectful of our roles and how we continue to move the city forward.
Great, thank you, Nicole. It's a pleasure being here, Mayor, Council, and I'm really looking forward to our time together. So you have the packet of information that's in front of you. There is the interview summary and I really appreciate the conversations that we had earlier in January, the one-on-one conversations. So I put the summary together and that's going to be a really primary document for us today. We'll use that as a launching off pad. And as you recall from our one-on-one conversations, my approach is to come in and interview council, get a sense about where you are on the three big topics for today. Individual council members, getting to know individual council members, your approach to decision-making, how you approach your job, council-to-council relations, how councils should engage with each other, principles, norms, and values around that, and then how council engages with staff, principles, norms, and values around staff-council interactions. So it was great being able to talk to you about those three areas, get some high-level initial thoughts from you, and then I put that down in the summary. And as I mentioned, my approach is to come in today with that interview summary and use that as a catalyst for conversation, a way to generate discussion. What I don't do is I don't come in and say, okay, I interviewed you all, here's where you're at, here's what the three things you should do. I don't adopt that expert model, especially when you're talking about things like principles, norms, and values about council-to-council relations and council-staff relations. So we will go through the interview summary and use that, as I mentioned, as a launching off point to have discussion. And we'll divide those into those three areas. In addition to that, we have staff here. You have your city manager, your assistant city manager and clerk. If there's any questions that come up around procedures, we can certainly surface those. And so that's the primary document is the interview summary. There's also the first document after the public agenda, which is some annotated notes to the agenda. And so that's a little bit different than the public agenda, but we can refer to that as well and you have that in your packet. Also included, just as background information, after the campaign is over, aim for exceptional. This is background information. It's a really nice article from Western Cities. You all know this, the difference between campaigning and governing. You're done with the campaign. You had your election last November. You have your new council seated. Now you get down to the business of governing and what does that look like? There's some really nice suggestions in there, mostly for council-council relations and council-staff relations. And then the last document you have are a couple excerpts from your council procedures and policies. And as we start working through our process here this afternoon, the deliverable today, a potential deliverable today, is a how we work together document. That is how council works together with each other. Again, principles, norms, and values that would govern those interactions. Looking over your procedures and policies, there's one piece at the very end, your code of ethics, that has a couple principles, norms, and values in there. So later on, let me check in with you. Do you want to add to your code of ethics today? Are you good with your code of ethics and we don't need to make any changes? Do you want to add to your code of ethics? Do you want a new document that just outlines the principles, norms, and values for council-council relations as an attachment to your procedures and policies? So there's a couple different options out there and obviously this is a council's preference on which direction you want to go. I'll check in with you and frame that for you as we work through our process this afternoon. Just a quick ground rules here. Really appreciate you speaking candidly and just speaking up and sharing your experiences, listening openly to your colleagues, and then maximizing participation. Wonderful to hear from everybody today. Is it okay to use first names? Is that okay? Do I have permission to do that? Good, thank you very much. I encourage Nicole that we should be off-site here today, get out of council chambers, change up the dynamic a little bit. It's more informal, less structured. We don't have Robert's Rules of Order. So that's the beauty of a session like today because it really is about standing back from your everyday council meetings and the day-to-day work of the city. How are we doing as a council? What kind of council do we want to be? How do we want to engage with each other? How do we want to engage with staff? In my experience, wise councils do this. These norms, principles, and values, in my experience, they're going to settle in to, especially when you have a newly-seeded council. They'll settle in whether you want them to or not. So why not be intentional and deliberate in shaping what those are on the front end before they habits and patterns start settling in? So in my experience, you don't want to do this all the time. You have real tangible work that you need to get done for the city. So you don't want to be doing this all the time, but yearly, annually, a check-in makes total sense to me. And for me, it's the hallmark of an effective council and you'll see this in this article as well. That's what good councils do. They reflect on their rules of engagement with each other, so to speak. So that's what we're here to do today. Any questions? How's that sound for everybody? Does that work for folks? Great.
Thanks for being here.
Excellent. I'm super happy to be here. This is wonderful. And again, really enjoyed the one-on-one conversations and actually I'm quite impressed with what you all came up with. And for me, what that does is that bodes well for our session today, but most importantly, I think it bodes well for the City of Albany and the work of this particular council over the next year or the next two years. So I did, one of the last questions I asked in our one-on-one interview summary was, what do you want this session to be? What does success look like? What do you want to achieve? And just a quick summary of what I heard, and this is, as I said, these are just comments that I'm picking out from each of you. I didn't attribute names to them. We get to know each other better, how each of us thinks, our personalities, our approach to decision-making. That was one of you said that would be a good goal for the session. We engage in open and honest communication. Fantastic. We come to an understanding of how council wants to work together. Make sure we're on the same page. Perfect. Ensure council members are speaking for themselves, not as representatives of a cultural group or constituency, so you're all speaking for yourself. And I really liked this last one. I mentioned speak candidly and at the same time, enable council members to manage their own boundaries about what they want to share about themselves. There's no disclosure expectations here. Whatever you're comfortable disclosing about when we get into the individual council members and getting to know each other, your approach to decision-making, your approach to being a council member. And there is a very specific request. Find out how each of the council members wants to be addressed in public. Not so much at a council meeting, but you're at a community event. How do you refer to each other? Is it council member Hanson Romero? Is it Jennifer? Is it something even more loose and informal? So let's make sure we address that at some point before.
I prefer empress.
And the beauty is you get to decide, right? So we have an empress. There might be a king here. There might be a majesty here. Who knows what you'll all come up with? Okay, and Jennifer has set us off on the right course. We're very informal here today. We're going to be very loose and informal today. This is not a highly structured meeting or anything along those lines. So are we all good? Everybody good? Okay, I'm going to jump into our first, just real quick activity, a little warm-up exercise, accomplishments. So I know a couple of you are new to the council, but you're obviously plugged into the community. What do you see as the top one or two city accomplishments in 2022? And is there anything in particular that you're especially proud of? And it doesn't mean that you did it. It just means that you were involved in it or that you took a special pride in it. Vice Mayor, you want to get us started?
Sure. I think in particular, the San Pablo Avenue specific plan, something that I was really proud the city took on and was able to pass last year.
Excellent, very good. Is that one that's also sort of a personal pride for you as well?
It was not one that I was involved in, but it is something that I think my first reaction in visiting the East Bay in the year 2000 was, wow, San Pablo doesn't have a lot going on on it. And that wasn't a specific to Albany, that was just the East Bay.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Robin?
Yeah, I'd say in terms of city accomplishment, more so to the community members, was very surprised and excited to see voter turnout during a non-presidential election year. And in terms of personal accomplishment, I would say I'm very proud that my son, my wife gave birth to my son during the campaign trail. You know, that's something I'm very, very proud of because that young little guy went through a lot to be here. I guess I'd also just say I'm very proud of the fact of just being here on council and potentially the first ever Latinx mixed indigenous person to ever sit on council for the City of Albany, which, you know, at times feels like a bit of weight to carry, but also at the same time feels like a sense of relief.
Excellent. What's your son's newborn's name?
Omoteiti, which means the Lord of Duality. So we can address people as the Empress, the Lord of Duality in public.
I love it. That's great. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Yeah, on council, I'd say definitely, I'd have to agree with John. I was very happy that we worked on the specific plan for San Pablo Avenue. In a similar vein, we're not done with it yet, but I was very happy with the work we did on the housing element, which had been a priority and something I had been interested in or a place where a lot of my focuses for being on council sort of came together. So a really big area of work that I think we're doing a good job on, hopefully will be an even bigger accomplishment in this year.
Excellent. So it's submitted? The housing element is submitted?
The first draft was submitted. There will be more, another submittal.
Okay, okay. Was it today or tomorrow was the deadline on that?
It's tomorrow. We're not going to have it submitted then, but we will soon.
It's a soft deadline. Preston?
Yeah, I'm proud of the community that have passed property tax to fully fund the fire department, so restored funding for emergency medical services, advanced life support, and to bring staffing and department back up to median. And this is a community that is pretty amazing. It passes most of the tax measures that are in front of it, so it really pulls together as a community and sees the value that local government brings.
Excellent, very good. What was the vote, if you recall?
I think it was 76%.
Oh, fantastic. That's great.
Yeah, pretty amazing.
Impressive. Jennifer?
I think I'm most thankful for having this opportunity right here to do this team building and for our city staff to recognize the importance and the value behind this. And also, you know, I know it's a big mess up there right now, but I'm super proud that all of this construction is happening because that's what needs to happen.
Very good. Nicole apologized to me for the construction here and I said, well, you know, it's a good sign. You've got movement, right? Upgrades, improvements are being made. That's great. Okay, we are going to move forward into our learning about individual council members. As I mentioned, we're dividing this into three sections, so individual council members, council-council relations, council-staff relations. So let's start there and let me review with you what I heard from you from the interview summary and then turn it over to you to expand and elaborate on what we heard. One of the questions I asked here was what inspired you to be involved in public service? What event shaped your decision to run for city council? All of you said that your experience doing community service, community advocacy in Albany as well as other cities was a key factor in your decision to run for council. Several of you have served on city commissions, nonprofit organizations, different kinds of community groups. There was a commitment to community service for many of you that was instilled at a very young age. Some of you have relatives who were, Jennifer, I think, was a former council member, mayor. Others, I think, Robin, you were mentioned, you were involved in politics right from the very beginning as a young child. It continued through your post-secondary education and into your career choices. The mayor, architect, had done, or John, I believe, had done some architect work and had done community engagement as part of a private company. So that was part of what motivated you to run. All of you said you were committed to serving the community. Some quotes here, I want to help my community, I want to have an impact, I want to create change. You enjoy being part of the process. You enjoy having a hand in shaping the direction of the city. Some of you first thought about running for council because someone approached you and encouraged you to do it. It wasn't like, oh, wow, I want to be on council because of this or because of that issue. Somebody approached you, maybe you hadn't even thought about it. Oh, okay, let me think about that. Others, there were particular issues that motivated you. You were involved in an issue around infrastructure, sidewalk repairs, diversity, economic development, and you thought, wow, I have some experience, some interest and skill in these areas and I can bring that to council. So those were just some of the answers in terms of motivating you to run for council. Want to share anything? Want to add anything in terms of your motivation for being involved in public service? Your reason for running for council? What the context was for you running for council? Want to share? Well, just jump in, Preston.
Yeah, sure, I'll share. So I hadn't thought about serving on council, but I was asked by council member Pilch to run. I'd been asked by a number of people to run at the time and I'd said, no, no, no. This was in 2018. And before that, because I do a lot of data analysis on my work, so it's a habit, I discovered that, or daylighted, no council incumbent had lost in over 30 years. And I'd sort of socialized that fact in the civic ecosystem. And so when Nick asked me, he said, well, nobody's going to run against incumbents and you're partially responsible for this. And so I had to take some responsibility for actually having an election. So I decided, I said yes to him when he put that in front of me. And then, you know, a lot of people stepped up to campaign for me. And so in 2020, as a, really a factor of honoring all the work that those people put in, I felt incumbent on me to run again. So that's sort of the near term of how this happened. You know, you can go back and back. You know, my mom was very civilly engaged. She eventually ended up as a trustee of the California Museum of Science and Industry. But ultimately, I don't know why I'm here. These are all stories about why I'm here. You know, neuroscience research shows that we make decisions before we're even conscious of the decision we've made and then we make up a story to make sense of the decision we've made. And so I try to keep that in mind, both about myself and interacting with other people.
Very good. I like that. That's the story and you're going to stick to that story. Whether it was reconstructed accurately or not, okay.
Yeah, mine was just on a dare.
Go ahead.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, being fourth generation in Albany, I had originally said third generation on some of my campaign materials and then my uncle called me and goes, what the heck are you talking about? You're a fourth-generation dummy. I was like, oh, okay.
I was wondering about that because I thought I'd heard you say fourth generation.
So I didn't get all the generations in there right. But, you know, and we were talking earlier, my father was born where the hospital once used to be before this was the community center and stuff like that. So, and, you know, so I've always considered Albany my home, my little fishbowl, my, and I think, you know, I had been asked for many, many times, you know, oh, run for council, run for council. No, 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 no. I would come up with all sorts of excuses. My favorite one was it was past my drinking hour, but, just a joke. So, but basically, you know, it's the mama bear in me kind of feels like, you know, I want to put my arms around this community and take care of it and continue to nurture it and, you know, to appreciate and celebrate the past as well as, you know, bring good things in for the future and the future of, you know, the residents and the community here and just being able to develop and encourage youth to, you know, be part of the community and be part of the decisions because, you know, as we grow up over years and generations here, you know, it's our kids and our grandkids who really, you know, get to experience. So keeping that cherished part, but also making positive forward motion in the same respect.
Excellent, very good. It impresses me on councils that you're making these decisions that are legacy decisions. Some decisions are just quick and they're going to evaporate, but other decisions you make, they're going to be here, they're going to outlast you all. And what a responsibility that is. It's pretty impressive. Robin?
Yeah, I would say similar to the vein Preston went on, I think now that I'm elected and I contextualize it, I think the reasons or the motivation were reasons I didn't quite understand initially or didn't recognize, but, you know, now that I'm elected and as I mentioned earlier, I have my son and as well as my 12-year-old, you start to think about some of the things that Jen had just mentioned too. How do you build out a community that's sustainable for the next generation? How do you make them feel energized and motivated to keep that going? How do you translate that energy into them? Because things do evolve, the way information shared has evolved. I come from a weird transitionary period wherein it went from newspapers to MySpace and apparently now everything's on TikTok. I asked my 12-year-old, hey, can you look this up? And let me check TikTok. And I'm like, what happened to Google? You know, those are the things that motivate me. How do we stay current with the times? And I think that does tie into my initial reason for running and coming here in the first place, which was to be a different voice, a different perspective, different life experience that perhaps Albany as a city has not had at the decision-making table quite yet. And there's an opportunity and there's a lot to be said about that for folk that do come from those struggles or do come from varying socioeconomic backgrounds to, you know, not speak for all of them, but at least be a voice for folks who sometimes don't feel like they're ever heard. And, you know, I say that how I'm framing it right now. It may change in 20 years. We'll see. It may change in 20 minutes.
Thank you. Aaron?
Yeah, I think there's a couple different parts to it and one of them is the thing I think you were talking about that I talked about one-on-one is the, you know, immediate issue-based sort of thing that motivates a lot of us. If I, you know, before this, I was working in housing for Almeida County for local government and I loved doing that, but I wanted to be more in the driver's seat there on housing policy and knew that, you know, housing crisis is a big issue, my town should be doing more about it, someone should be representing that view on council and bringing that experience, trying to do the things on the ground there. But the more sort of, you know, and for me, I had known I wanted to run for council for a while. I'd, you know, I'd made a conscious decision when I finished my undergrad to come back to the Bay. I went almost as far away as possible through the UK and then figured out, no, I really like it there and I'd like to go back. And it wasn't just the food. Like I really wanted to come back to the Bay and do something like being on council. So I'd known I wanted to, but for me, I needed to justify to myself, you know, once I thought, well, it's this issue I want to work on, there's some expertise I think I can bring. I've wanted to do it, but why should it be me? You know, why do I think I should be there? And there were a couple reasons that I came to. You know, one was that, you know, Nicole mentioned at the start, this is unusual and that everyone here has a day job, that they had to, you know, get off at 3:00 to come here to do. When the council before Preston and I got on, it was mostly retirees. So there was not that many young voices on there. And unfortunately, Preston's diligent looking at old newspapers proved that I was not the youngest council member ever elected. I think I was tied, much to my annoyance. I was really hoping that those records were lost. And so that was a good reason for me of, you know, no one from my generation is representing this government right now. But there was also a part of it of just, you know, I think we were here to represent people and groups and our views, but also we are people in ourselves and we have to exercise our judgments. We have to say, why is, you know, what's personal about me? And I think this job is very hard, but a lot of people who are elected officials, you know, at the national level or whatever, make this job look a lot harder than it needs to be. And so I think it takes a certain personal traits like patience and, you know, willingness to deal with a lot of things and be the shield to get, you know, harangued about things going badly and willingness to dig into things that I think I had to say to myself, I have these things and I think those would be good for this role.
Excellent, very good. Thank you. John?
Yeah, so I was, I think if you'd talked to me in June of last year, someone reached out to me in June of last year, said, do you know anyone who wants to run for council? And my first thought was, well, maybe, but I'd really love to get on a commissioner committee. And that changed a little bit. I will say that that person sold me a little bit of a false bill of sales in terms of what campaigning is really like.
Painted a rosy picture.
But, you know, I think for me, this all came together at a really fortuitous time. 2013, I stepped down from Traffic and Safety, which is now Transportation Commission. Things were a little chaotic at my house and a little chaotic at work. I kind of, I think our family's often described, we all went into this dark tunnel where we didn't know where the end was going to be. I kind of, I think I, our family is often described, we all went into this dark tunnel where we didn't know where the end was going to be. And I think over the years, we've found people that have helped us. We've found things that have been our light at the end of the tunnel. And I think 2020 was kind of a shock for, I think, for all of us. 2021, we actually started to see the end of the tunnel. And I think my steps during that time, I think, prepared me better to be in a position on council than I would have ever thought I would be. So personally at home, understanding that you can't control everything and that you have to worry about those things that you have control over and go with those things that you can't control. So I think on the personal side, that's, you know, the family side. From work, I transitioned from a position where I was the project manager and I was worried about every little detail. And that worked great on traffic and safety because all I really worried about the little details and complained about like, well, why aren't we talking about the bigger picture? But in work, I transitioned into a situation where now I think about the big picture. And, and I actually have to avoid getting stuck in the smaller, smaller details. And so I'm hoping that that's something that will help me on council is understand that I need to trust staff and I need to trust our commissioners to make good and well-informed decisions. And that we stay at the high level, that we're thinking about when we come back to the community in 20 years, if we were to leave and come back. Will the community be in a better place? Will we have laid policy and direction for the city? And so that's really my goal and hope. I will say I'm very happy that someone reached out to me and asked me if I would run. My family, we did a long weekend and I think my kids, you know, it's the cliche that you learn a lot from your kids or you learn more from your kids than you teach them. They were all on board with me running and they commented, I always imagined that my oldest son would be the first politician in our family. Kind of expected him to go to school, go to law school and then become a politician. But you know, I'm, I'm very excited to be here. I'm very excited, the support that I got from the public. And I'm hoping to be able to contribute some of the things I've learned, both professionally and then just if I lose patience, please understand that I, it is something I continually work on.
Thank you. And you're, you're setting an example for your son, right? As a role modeling to his future political aspirations. Very good. The continuing on the individual council members, and this gives you an opportunity to reflect a little bit about your approach to the job. How you approach the job, how you approach decision-making, how you approach policymaking as a council member. The question was what type of information and support are important to you in your decision-making? Quantitative, qualitative? You like, you like specifics and details, more summaries? Most of you said quantitative information. You put that in the foreground. You use that primarily to assist your decision-making. At the same time, there's broad agreement that quantitative data that you get from staff or from outside reports need to be balanced with qualitative information. You're consulting with constituents. You're talking to developers. You're talking to staff, not just getting a quantitative information. Judgment, opinions, nuanced information. And that qualitative information is especially important when you don't have quantitative data because you don't have quantitative data on everything. And sometimes the quantitative data is not definitive. It doesn't say, oh, here's the data, here's the decision. So you've, somebody said, you need to fill in the blanks, right? Exercise your judgment, as, as Aaron said. There's also a mix on council among you five about broad summaries or detailed information. Some of you want the details. You want to get immersed in the, in the nuts and bolts and that's very important to you, the specifics and nuances. Others have a preference for summaries to assist them in, in grasping the big picture. One of you just said, I'm not a detailed person. The choice between summaries or details, just like between quantitative and qualitative is contingent, right? It depends. And so just what John just said, well, I usually prefer to be in the details. But I'm also realistic about this packet that I get every week. And I have home obligations and I also have a day job. So as much as I'd love to get down in the details, I'm going to have to stay at a high level, at a higher level summary, even though my preference is for the details. So it really is contingent. So it really does depend. So hopefully this was an opportunity for you to reflect on what your process is, but very important to share that with your colleagues. So they get a sense about how you approach a policy decision. So talk a little bit more about your approach, quantitative, qualitative, specifics, broad summaries, or anything else that you want to share about your approach. Robin, get us started.
Sure. This is quite ironic because we're talking about data and this Wednesday I'll be giving a lecture to my students in my UC Berkeley class about data management. And we do have to talk about this idea of qualitative and quantitative data management. For me, my background, you know, I've worked for 10 years with the US Department of Energy at the Berkeley Lab. And my mind and my brain is very much wired into the details and into having access to the raw data and knowing what to do with it. But I also grew up in a very particular way where I don't always need all the information. Sometimes not having all the information could mean the difference between life or death. So sometimes I'm good without that information. But I also recognize that there needs to be this two-way street of trust. And I think I mentioned this in my comment that I'm more of a approach of getting broad information and trusting that city staff, putting my trust in the city staff that they've already done their research and I'm just here to look it over if I happen to have any questions and I know who to consult with, I know who to talk to. And I take that same approach on with undergrad that I mentor at UC Berkeley. I put my trust in them. I have to trust them. Otherwise they're not going to be able to grow academically and personally and professionally. So I have to be able to allow myself to compartmentalize the way I think, the way my mind is wired. And that's how I approach this idea of local governance and I try to project it into like how I am as a father and parenthood. Like, hey, 12 year old, I don't need all this information because I don't want beef with a seven year old right now. Just let me know what's, what's going on and I'll, I'll email the principal. That's how I, that's how I take it.
Very good. Excellent. And feel free to ask each other questions if you, if you are so inclined to do that. Jennifer, how about you? Your, your approach to the job, decision-making, policymaking?
Well, you know, I mean, I have to say, kind of like what we had mentioned before is, you know, these, these were city council. Whereas other city councils in the past have made these decisions that end up, you know, affecting many people years after, you know, the council has come and gone. And so I think a lot of my way that I, I like to, to work things is kind of to get that background knowledge from city staff. I think that they, you know, they've seen, they've seen things along the way. And so it's really good to go back to the kind of that historical knowledge and where did it start? Where did it come from? Looking at what are, what are the issues that we're really trying to solve? What's broken? You know, if something's not broken, let's not fix it, you know, or tinker with it too much. You know, there's, there's other priority things that need to be done. And so, you know, my approach is always kind of looking at, you know, what, what's the most needed thing to have happen? And what can have, what can be done quickly in a short amount of time and get that off, get that off the table? And let's, you know, work from the easiest and let's, let's keep going because the more successes we can have with easy projects really helps build the foundation of how we all work together too, right? You know, because if we're able to collaborate and agree on simple things, it just continues to grow and build that relationship. So that we're able to be in a better spot to tackle the more difficult things. And we've built that trust and that, you know, like you were saying, Rob, and that two-way street of trust. So.
That's right. And you also mentioned you're very practical.
Yes.
What's going to work?
It has to make sense. It's gotta be logical. Sorry.
Very good.
I just want to comment really quick on what Jennifer has said as well, like about working and collaborating with each other and having that trust. This was the conversation that I've had with other folks too. And being in elected office, being able to work with each other, no matter what our policy or platforms are, respective ideologies are. Being able to work with each other allows the broader community to have trust in what we're doing, the decisions we're making. And we've seen, me, Jen and John seeing examples of dysfunctional city councils at the League of Cities in Sacramento, like how wayward things can go. But it doesn't just go wayward for the council itself and for city staff. It creates dysfunction within the community. And when you have dysfunction in the community, you have community members that are going at each other's throats for no reason. They forget what they're, they're barking about. And we've, we lose sight on the practical things we actually could address, those successes that you were referencing. And I just want to highlight and, you know, emphasize what Jen had said, that that is critically important.
When I come into a city organization, the first thing I look at is how does council get along with each other? Are they collaborative? Do they, and you're going to have differences, right? It's built into the democratic process. How do you manage those differences, right? Are we polarized? Does it become personal? Does it become adversarial? Or can we collaborate across our differences? Huge, as you say, Robin, because it impacts staff. Whether council gets along, collaborates effectively or not, and it impacts the, the community as well. And then the second thing I look is council-staff relations. And usually the council-council relations helps shape what the council-staff relationships are. Aaron, how about you? Your approach?
First off, I'd, I'd agree with both Jennifer and Robin. You know, it's, it's all, all the info we get is dependent on trust and knowing that it's correct and knowing that, you know, we're working together on the right thing and we'll talk more about staff stuff later, but you know, especially for, if we're talking about how we're presented with data, that's dependent on having good staff that we can trust, that we, we know are presenting the right thing. And I think we're very lucky to, to have that. Because, you know, again, we all know of examples where that is not the case. Unfortunately, and it makes it much more difficult to conduct even basic business when that sort of thing breaks down. On how, you know, what I need to make decisions, you know, the, I, I did a largely data degree in, in policy analysis. But I'm not a data guy. The, the data is useful in showing what is going to be effective. But how I make decisions is what is, what do I think is the right thing? What's the right thing to do ethically? And the, you know, effectiveness of whatever we're looking at is instrumental in deciding what is going to be the right thing. But it's not the, the, it's not the be all and end all.
Right, right.
Which, you know, makes sense. We have people on this council who are PhD students or scientists and whatever. I'm not one of those people. Which also means, you know, I'm not, as I said to you, I'm not a details person. Hopefully no future job interview where people are watching this, as I try not to say that in job interviews because everyone says detail oriented. But it's the bigger, it's the bigger picture of, you know, what do I think is the right thing to do? How does this help me grasp that using my intuition to say, these are the salient bits of information I can glean from what we've got in front of us?
Excellent. Very good. Preston?
Well, I am the data guy. And really detail oriented. I have not transitioned to management. Assiduously avoided that so far, better for worse. So yeah, I very much like all the details. Stylistically, I tend to identify what I think are a few, few problems that, that this city, and there was that question of why, why run for council? This is a city that probably is coming together to solve problems as evident by the measure K that passed and how much it passed. So I try to identify some problems that take longer to solve. Work together with whoever's interested in working together to come up with, with solutions to that based on data. And then just push forward and push forward until we can get it passed and get it on the ground.
Excellent. And in my experience, having a diverse council, detailed oriented, data oriented, more broad, summary, less detailed. That's good that you have that, that mix on council. And in my experience, having that, that kind, all kinds of diversity is great. And that kind of quantitative, qualitative, specific, general diversity is effective as well. John, did we get to you on this question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think I definitely valued data and I like getting data. But I think professionally, I, I have watched communities get into what we describe in our office as analysis paralysis. There's always more data you can try and collect. There's always more data you can try and analyze. And, and hope and wish, whatever side you're on, on, on whatever issue is being addressed, that the data is going to come back with the answer you wanted. And I think the one thing that I recognize for us as a community is, as council members, we're not running a business, right? We're not, there are so many unexpected that we have to be able to do what's best. We have to take our best guess with our best decision based on the data available. And so I recognize that, you know, if it was, if the data always told you exactly what to do, we wouldn't need a job. Like we wouldn't be here, right? And so, you know, I think the data is great to set a framework, but in the end, we all have to be able to make, come to a decision. I think the other thing is that we're, we're in a place where, and this is part of why I wanted to be on council was we are in a place of unknown. COVID threw businesses for a loop. The state has thrown land use planning for a loop. And so I, I say that because, sorry, I kind of went off on tangent there and I can't, I'm trying to circle back to the data part. I think in my work, I've also found that when you're trying to do something and deal with the unknown, if you're only looking at data that looks to the past, you'll never find the answer because the problems we're facing today are not something that we've experienced in the past. And so data is useful and it can teach you things. So we don't make the same mistakes. But when we're challenged with new problems, data's not going to solve it. Data's not going to give us the answer. And so I am also cautious of that. On the professional side, we often do market studies or our clients do market studies. Most market studies look back, oh, what sold in the last five years, particularly what sold in the last 18 months. But if you're bringing something new or you're trying to do something new in a community, there's not going to be any data to go by. And so you really have to be led by your moral compass and your compass, knowing that you are pointing the city in the right direction.
Okay. Everybody okay? Any follow-up for each other on that piece?
Just to, just to add, John, I think that was, that was very well put, especially if, you know, if it was, if all the answers were in the data, we wouldn't need to do anything, which I get, I think gets at a very important part of our job. Which is, you know, in deliberations, it's our job to really say, you know, how do we view the competing worldviews that we, we're being presented with? And I think of that mostly about, you know, the most difficult decisions I think council has to make where we have a lot of people involved who have very strong views on both sides of an issue. What we're doing is not just saying, well, this side is right because the, the paper shows. What we're, what we're saying and, you know, for me personally, why I often in those situations tend to drone on a little bit in council deliberations and, and have quite a bit to say is because I think we need to, it is our job to then explain, here's what we think is the right thing. Here's what, how we view these worldviews and how they come together and why we think that, you know, this one is the, is the right one to go with, or, or why we need to plot this path through them.
And, and I'll share a little bit, something that I've shared both with staff, with staff is, you know, my professional work in the public engagement, we do that. We work with community. But we're not constrained by the Brown Act. And so I, I, I think one of the things I've talked a lot with staff about is that's going to be an adjustment period for me, right? Because by the time something comes to us at council, it's much harder to have that really open discussion and try and dig deep. Because by then often the trenches are drawn, the lines are drawn and so it's much harder. And so one of the things that I, I hope to work with staff a lot is making sure our commissions and our staff are really asking those questions early on and trying to dig deep. Because if it gets us, if by the time it gets to council, it's, it's harder for me to go through all the processes that I usually go through to try and understand what is the right solution.
Several of you mentioned the Brown Act as inhibiting, right? The development of council relations and it is. I mean, it's good reason for the Brown Act, right? The development of council relations, and it is. I mean, it's good reason for the Brown Act, right? But it has these maybe unanticipated, maybe anticipated negative outcomes. So what we're doing here today, just, you're you're never going to be able to have this kind of conversation. The five of you in the room together, having this kind of conversation outside of an event like this. Um, let's move forward. We now move on to our second segment, Council to Council Relations. And so if you do have the interview summary, on page two is uh, the responses to the question, what principles, norms and behaviors should guide uh, communication between council members? In other words, how should you and your council colleagues communicate with each other? This is a really strong, outstanding list of items here. Focus discussions on what's best for Albany, the greater good of the community. Build positive relationships based on mutual respect. Be collegial, friendly, kind to each other. Assume positive intent. Be patient with each other. Be honest, straightforward and transparent. Find areas of common ground and agreement. Be open to new op- options and new ideas. Handle disagreements and conflicts offline, not in public. Listen first, avoid jumping to conclusions. Create opportunities to freely explore ideas, of course, within the the Brown Act. Allow time to speak, hear from all of us. Seek to understand each other's concerns, issues and perspectives. Ask the negative side of the question. What's ineffective communi- uh, communication? What sorts of things should you and your council colleagues avoid? Criticizing each other in public, taking things personal, personally, making it personal. Overreacting, snapping back, getting defensive. Avoiding a winner take all, my way or the highway, drawing lines in the sand approach. Being short with each other, interrupting, not listening, not letting others finish. Forming cliques or rigid voting blocks. And I do want to draw your attention. You do have in your code of ethics, you have two items in your code of ethics that speak to this. One is build teamwork, be open with ideas, feelings and attitudes. Gain an honest evaluation of your ideas, recruit assistance in implementing them. The key is be open with ideas, feelings and attitudes. And the other is respect. Show respect, effective communication and leadership. Respect your colleagues from criticism, for criticism to be effective, make it sure it's constructive. Embarrassing a colleague or staff in public is counterproductive. Follow legitimate channels of communication. And remember that staff performance reflects your leadership abilities. Work together. So, um, how does that list and just working off the positives, right? What is, what is the preferred, what are the preferred norms, principles and behaviors? Um, how does that list sound to you? Is there anything lis- missing from that list? Any questions you have about any of these? Any of these you think should come off the list that aren't appropriate there? Initial reactions, thoughts about these?
Um, well, I very much like the panel disagreements and conflicts offline. Um, when I was mayor last year, there were two instances where other council members criticized me in the moment. Um, and I had wished that they had done it outside the meeting.
Okay.
Um, it was clear that there were things that they'd been thinking about for quite a while. And uh, uh, with one of the instances, it was essentially retaliation for something that I had brought to them offline. Um, and tried to, tried to clear up. And when, and they, and they did make an adjustment, but they looked it being clear, they waited for an opportunity to kind of get back at me in public about it, which uh, wasn't great. So, yeah.
This was a criticism of you, right? It wasn't, um, uh, I disagree with your view of this issue. I think we should go in a different direction. It was this, you did something wrong.
Yeah, it was, I was running the meeting incorrectly.
Okay, 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 very good. Other thoughts about the list there? Let me, let me ask, uh, do you feel the need here to codify these items here? Or you have those two and you have that that on the code of ethics, you have that, the excerpts from your um, policies and procedures. It's uh, GG, code of ethics policy. And again, there's only two items in there that relate to what we're doing. Just real quick, so your rules and procedures, every council has them. Um, uh, they, they are absolutely necessary and they lay out what the rules are, right? Especially, they're primarily focused on public meetings. So they are enforceable rules that are externally imposed. What we're doing here today is, we're not, we're certainly not violating any of those, but what we're doing today is underneath those formal rules that are enforced and externally posed are these implicit norms and principles and values. Behaviors that you all, and it's not externally posed. You all generated this list that I just read. And it's up to you, if you want to codify these, these would be your working document. How we Albany City Council works together. And the only legitimacy of these items is your sanctioning them is legitimate. There's no city attorney here saying, there's no law, there's no outside uh, entity saying, here, here's the rules that you all need to follow and we will enforce them. So is that something that you want to pursue? Having a, having this list or a list like this that would be added on to your rules of procedures or added into your code of ethics? You could bolster your co- code of ethics here. Just any initial thoughts around that?
I think it helps to uh, to do so, uh, not because I have concerns about how we may interact with each other uh, in any negative way. I think for the most part, uh, well, at least I, speaking for myself, I feel like I have good relationships and good communication with everyone. Um, but I think doing so helps set a precedence for folks in the future who may also consider running, it signals to folks that certain behavior is a no go. Um, that, that's why I would be in support of it. Uh, not necessarily because I feel like I'm concerned anyone's going to act out of pocket or uh, go wayward. Um, but I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with Robin.
A- and and um, uh, when I was coming into the interviews, I was not making any assumptions at all, right? Oh, my goodness, Albany City Council, they need some repair here. They need some fixes here, right? I wasn't coming, or they're doing great. I wasn't coming in with any assumptions. Uh, but to Robin's point, what this council could do, and I'm not advocating this, this is council's decision. If you were to codify these, and we can talk about the, what the right venue is in format, it's a legacy that you're leaving. And and not just for you, this particular council, but for the next council. And then, and what I would encourage the city manager to do is when you have the next council come in, let's get those out again. Council, did these work for you? Any additions, subtractions? Let them put their stamp on it. But it keeps the tradition of council, effective, productive council, council relations alive, front and center. And part of the tradition of Albany and you could, not to say that there was bad things in the past, I, Preston just mentioned an example. But you could, this could be part of the legacy that this council leaves the fu- uh, future councils. And in my experience too, when I've worked with cities, well governed cities, it's almost like a tradition and a practice that gets handed down to the new council members. And it keeps that positive tradition and practice going. And the opposite happens too. Dysfunctional polarization on the council, that gets passed on to the next council and on to the next council. And it becomes sort of the norm for that particular city. So I just throw that out there as a, as a way to move forward. So Jennifer thinks it's a good idea. Robin initiates that idea. Other thoughts about codifying these? And we mu- and if you want to add or subtract to these, we can certainly do that. Preston?
Um, so I'm, I'm agnostic. Uh, I'm not really a organizational development person, so I'm happy to go along in that regard. If the council's amenable, I would like to invite staff because I recognize we only have four years of institutional memory. Or maybe four and a half years now, or four years and four months, um, over here on council and staff has a lot more institutional memory, um, seeing different councils. And so I'm curious, if the council's amenable, what staff thinks of this list or the things that you would add, suggest, bring up, discuss. Um, I know seeing nods that people are amenable. Um, I know it's kind of putting you on the spot. I didn't, I didn't prepare you for this.
Kind of curious, like, when was the last time that this was updated? When was the last team building that you did with council? How long ago was that? Just out of curiosity?
Great question. Yeah, I'm happy to respond. In terms of team building, it's been quite a while. Uniquely, this council had three seats, three new seats, and it seemed critical. Uh, given the transitions that we've had globally and locally, uh, COVID is a repetitive topic, I know, but a heavy one. And so having everyone in person in this team building setting this time, I'm choosing not to use an office. And so it, you know, it's kind of iterative, depending on the city manager at the time. But this is my first team building at the onset versus strategic plan. We, we have had those facilitated over time. So if you consider this being step one to a facilitated process of really focusing the council on your mission and values and goals, this is step one of that. So we hope. Um, in terms of response, and I'll, I'll definitely turn to my team here, um, in, on your norms. I'll tell you, um, just in reflecting on the interviews in general, it was an A++. My perspective, just uh, to be frank with you all, uh, for a city manager to receive thi- this document as written and expressed by the council is incredibly inspiring. And it shows your energy and your commitment and your trust in staff and support in staff. So I honestly, I, I can't think of any changes to it. Uh, I think it's perfect as submitted.
She's gonna make me cry.
I'm even a little happy because um, because it's something that I really want to reinforce. But I've expressed to my staff that we're in a very functional and cosmical place. So I just want to put that on the table and make sure that that's well recognized. Um, and to the first bullet, I think that what I can say from my perspective in in a handful of different staff positions and certainly a city manager and a community member, the greater good of the community is something that you should definitely underscore and hold in the most challenging of circumstances, when you have your constituents of different, um, different perspectives on everything. Who am I not hearing from? Why? Have I heard from everybody? Is there something staff could do to help me hear from more people? This issue is so contentious. Have we gotten everything on the table? Why is it still contentious? And at some point, it's, the greater good of the community is to make a decision. And so there's a lot of scenarios that you may encounter in that regard where we have discussed it and we have analyzed it and, and we need to push go. And if we've, we need to regroup at some point and understand whether that go was as effective as, as necessary. Certainly lessons can always be learned. But really just underscoring that first bullet, which stood out to me the most. Anything else?
I have anything else to add. Nicole has covered really everything.
That suggests to me, um, and I, I don't know if this is actually in the council, um, policies and procedures, but I remember it's in the advisory book, which is, don't abstain. You know, you're there to, you're there to take a position, to make a decision, and if you abstain, then you're short circuiting that process. And so that's, I don't think I've abstained. Yeah, I don't think I've abstained on anything because of that, that history of being on advisory bodies. And it's like, only works if we each express our opinion and take a position and people can disagree, but that's what we've been hired to do essentially. Um, and I heard some, I heard you say something else that maybe could be reflected in here, which is uh, you know, know when the process is done and make a decision. Don't ask, just don't always ask for more process, because in some way that can, you know, be a stall or an avoidance of making a decision.
I think that's music to staff's ears.
It won't always be the case, but you know, there, there are some where it makes sense.
Yeah, or that, it's it's ripened as much as it's going to ripen, so.
I did want to chime into uh, the possibility or potentiality of codifying this. It also, it's adv- it's advantageous in the sense that it's also signaled to the greater community that being in elected space like this can also be a safe space. It could be a brave space. You know, we talk about this in D I circles all the time, but when you create a space that is welcoming, then you create opportunity to have more diversity on your council or more diversity within uh, the campaign uh, system. You, by doing so, potentially, we could help set the precedence for um, encouraging folks from minoritize or vulnerable identities to want to run, because now they see, okay, I'm not going to be attacked for who I am or what I look like or my life experiences. They will be respected. They have that documented. It goes a long way and then just, you know, also, you know, playing as this, potentiality of this iterative process goes a long way. I shared with you during my interview, uh, when I teach for nonprofit on the weekends with fourth and fifth graders, the first thing we do in our first class is create community guidelines. And they, we build off of that every semester and it evolves every semester based on what the kids are experiencing or what they think is relevant to that time. Um, it, it's a very powerful tool because in that class with fourth and fifth graders, they use it as a way to hold each other accountable, like, hey, you're not following the community guidelines. And it doesn't come off as combative. So I think just doing that and, you know, really, it might be a little odd or shaky for us at first, since this is like our first go with it. But it would probably put future generations of cohorts in on Albany, in Albany City Council in a good position to effectively make decisions and work with each other.
You know, I, I think about that. Um, you watch a council meeting and it's really kind of gets ugly and nasty. Why would I want to run for council? Why would I want to subject myself to that, right? And and um, if I'm coming from a minority community, am I going to be further subjected from, um, to that? But if they say, oh, this is the way Albany City Council, this is the way they conduct themselves, I can do that. I can get behind that. And you now, you, you increase your pool of recruitments for a potential city council members.
Yeah, especially if Aaron can keep the meeting short.
I'm doing really good so far, so.
Well, well, uh, in this article, one of the hallmarks of an exceptional council, we run effective meetings. And that means that we don't go till 1:00 PM. And I do see you have a 10:30 cutoff or a vote at 10:30. Smart on your part. And that also means, uh, know when the process is done and make a decision and not kicking it down the road. So we have a, you know, fourteen hour council meeting down the road. So, you know, smart on your part. Well, let me make a suggestion. What if um, you have your council code of uh, ethics policy? What if uh, I took a pass at taking these items here? And um, having, you'd have your council code of ethics policy and then you'd have your council um, principles, norms and behaviors. And so you'd have, uh, you have the ethics policy and then right after this would be the principles, norms and behaviors, council norms and behaviors. Uh, you're not agreeing to anything here, you're just agreeing to let us, me work with staff to do that. It would come back to you in a formal package in which you then would have a motion and approve it if you so desired.
I don't know, is he charging you extra for this, Nicole?
It's all, it's all, it's all built in, Jennifer. It's all built in.
Fiduciary duty number one.
Jennifer, was that you volunteering to do? Did that work?
That's true. You can have Jennifer do it and then you wouldn't have to pay me, right? Good stewardship, good, quite natural stewardship there, Jennifer. Now, how does that sound for council? And and there isn't an extra charge, because I built in time to do notes in the meeting, so there really is not an extra charge.
Good question, Jennifer.
I have to read the contract in the fine line.
And and if we go in that direction, I would um, uh, ask for council's permission on the one that says handle disagreements and conflicts offline. Um, how about if it's handle personal disagreements? Because you are going to have policies. Because you are going to have policy disagreements, right? You're not going to agree and that's a good thing, or at least it's a normal, natural thing. And you don't want to squelch that. You want to have policy, uh, differences. You just want to manage them effectively and constructively. Does that make sense, Preston?
Um, yeah, I don't know if it's personal or process or.
Maybe there's a better word.
Because I mean, personal, I mean, I'm thinking of the situations that I, that I alluded to. I wouldn't really characterize that as personal. I mean, I think it got made personal, but it was really more about process.
Okay.
Like your process is, I don't think your process is working well for the team. Yeah, so I, I don't know.
Okay, I, yeah.
I mean, I haven't seen, you know, and again, I only have two years of experience. I haven't seen it be personal. I didn't experience it being personal. I don't know. Erin, did you have anything? It was, you would characterize as personal?
Non-substantive disagreements?
How about non-policy disagreements?
Non-policy disagreements.
There we go, yeah. Anything that did, that is, falls within that big realm.
Yeah.
Is, you know, handle that offline. If it's a policy disagreement, bring it up at council meeting, right? Have a good, healthy, uh, debate and discussion around it.
If we don't get the wording right, I'm sure we'll adjust it from the dais. No worries on the specifics there.
Okay, so we, we okay on that path forward?
Yeah, I'll, I'll offer it. You know, I said I'm, I'm not much of organizational development person, um, so I'm agnostic. But I think listening to others, I'm realizing in part that's because of my position in society. I can be agnostic. So I'm, uh, I'm all for it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Excellent, very good. Okay, we can move forward on to, um, council staff relations and that's, uh, page three of the interview summary. Um, how do you view council's role in Albany city government compared to staff? What types of decisions are most important for council? And all of you, and I, this was, um, mentioned at the very beginning, all of you agreed that council's role is to focus on policy while staff's role is to utilize their professional expertise to implement the policy decisions and conducted day-to-day operations. A quote from one of you, "Council is responsible for policy decisions. Staff is responsible for execution." So that's kind of, um, uh, local government, council manager form of government 101. In my experience, it's amazing how that's not followed. And, uh, so it, uh, uh, the model that I work off of is that, um, there's a gap between council and staff, right? Policy, implementation, execution, and that good councils understand their role and maintain their role. Staff, good staff understands their role and, and maintains their role. Sometimes staff can become political. My mantra is that I learned from a, a, a former city manager, as staff, be politically astute, not political. Know where your council is politically, but I'm not political. And so when staff starts to, well, you know, geez, uh, Vice Mayor, you really should vote this way or, right? You're, you're actually becoming political and now you're not working the gap effectively. When council starts trying to direct staff on how to do staff work, um, uh, directing staff, telling staff what to do, now council's not working the gap effectively. And, and you're out of your lane, right? You're switching lanes. And so what I heard here is that you all are on board with what your role is in respecting staff's role. So just any thoughts about that? And, uh, you know, it seems kind of obvious, but I think it's good just to get it out on the table.
I want to know why staff.
See, there we go. I mean, there's a perfect example of the partnership here, right? Preston, did you have a thought?
Yeah, yeah, so I, um, coming into the office, I had this mental model that, that the city manager is the neck of the hourglass. I was like, wow, what a really incredibly difficult job to be. You know, this sort of pyramid's both ways and you're at the point of both. I've had situations recently with constituents where I've realized, oh, I'm kind of either the neck of the hourglass or letting myself become the neck of the hourglass where there's very specific things that are coming up that they want corrected and I'm looking for guidance on how to deal with that. And, uh, city manager and I are going to meet on Wednesday hopefully and that'll be one of the topics of conversation, sort of a mid, midterm set, check-in. But yeah, so that's where I think I get tripped up on the specificity and policy part.
Yeah.
And it's really easy to do. I mean, you know, when we have community members contacting us and we know, you know, maybe we've known about some issues before or, you know, we're just learning about issues and when they're emailing us all together collectively, it's like, okay, what do we do with this, you know? And how do we best address it? And, you know, looking to city staff and going, hey, what should I tell this person? Or what are you going to tell this person? Or who's supposed to do what? Because somebody's got to reply to that. So, and, you know, just, but keeping that open communication with staff and getting to understand and, uh, you know, realize kind of what's in our control or what's in our purview, what's, you know, or what really needs to be, okay, here I'm going to trust that you're going to take care of this for me and just, you know, give me the information I need.
Yeah, that kind of goes to, um, an idle daydream I had early on, which was part of the consequences of being a citywide elected council members is, is, and do all five of us respond? Does one of the, you know, and I was thinking, well, wouldn't it be great if there was a way we could organize ourselves so that, you know, these two people will respond on these topics, these two people will respond on these topics? It's probably unrealistic and it, it reminds me sort of one of the stories, to go back to stories of, of my civic orientation. I, uh, my freshman year, I lived in a dorm at UC Berkeley and we were on a floor with all doubles and there was no common room. And, uh, and I got the flu at one point. I had this great idea, you know, what if I could convince five other people to move into triples and then we could make one of the rooms a common room? And it was like, that would have been great for the collective good, but, you know, no way to convince people to get there. Um, and so I don't know, you know, I pretty quickly dropped that idea, but it was like, yeah, it seems like there's this inefficiency of kind of all five of us being on tap and not on tap. And I, I certainly, you know, for my own part, I cannot respond to every constituent email, um, just because I, I just don't have that much time. So that doesn't feel great. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's a way that we could organize ourselves to, to do better on that, but that's a dream.
Yeah, let's discuss it for a minute.
All the emails as they come in, right? There's, there's, obviously we get the summary of you've received these emails from these people during this week. Is there potentially a way? Because I don't, you know, I mean, unless I think I've reached out to you directly, Nicole, I'll be like, hey, here's this person, what do we do about this? And then you will respond to them and copy me on it just so that I know that it's been responded to. So then, you know, being able to checkmark off those, like, these, these people have been responded to. Because I do hear this complaint in the community quite frequently. I've emailed council, I've emailed staff, and I have not heard a response from anybody. And so I just want to, and I do know, it's, you have a very busy job. I understand. I mean, you know, ah! Um, is there a way to be able to follow up on call-in and, and, okay, this call's been, like a, a call center, almost like an IT center, like this issue's been resolved? You know, kind of tracking calls like that or emails like that? Is there something that could be done around that sense so that, and then maybe we all know, hey, we all got this email on, you know, Judy's front porch and the tree that crashed in on it. But, um, you know, now we know that Nicole's already followed up with this or the arborist has been there or, you know, something to, to where we know that as a whole collective that this problem has been issued so that we're not each individually, you know, coming after you going, oh, did this, did this happen? Did this get taken care of? You know, is that something?
I think I can answer that with practice versus a solution probably. Um, you know, basically the emails that come into the city council at AlbanyCA.org go to all five of you and it's usually fix it now or else. Whenever there's a factual response to provide, staff will provide it. It may not be instantaneous. It depends on the complexity of the issue and who I need to help me respond and where they are in any given day. Usually we try and turn it around within the day though, and that's copied back to the five of you. So you should get those answers. The complication comes in when individual council members get emails. And, you know, an example, this thing happened, I reached out to the department, they never responded. The first thing I'll say to that, which may sound offensive, is there's usually more to the story. At times, I will be completely honest that we missed something. It gets lost in someone's voicemail who was out and didn't forward their messages, whatnot. The system is inherently imperfect at times. When they come to my attention, they're addressed. And so my solution is do the same practice where if you get something individually, send it my way so that I can make sure you have the information. Or if it's a complicated issue, hand them off so that staff can work with them directly. It's a triage approach and it's not perfect, but it's the most functional solution I've had, um, in terms of how we could affect an improvement. I'm not quite sure I have a suggestion yet.
So, um, on emails or any correspondence that goes to all the council members, what if it just goes to all the council members? Do you forward it? Does somebody forward that to Nicole?
Well, my, my understanding of the city council at, address is that I believe you are copied on this. I don't know if other people are copied, so.
So you're automa- automatically copied?
Yeah.
Good. And then the individual correspondence that you receive, then you, um, uh, let the city manager handle that and, uh, divide that up to whatever staff member it goes to.
Yeah, because I know for me at first, I started going, well, I, I already know all the department heads, so I'm going to ask John this. I mean, I CC'd you on it, but it was like, it, it was like, oh, wait, no, wait, this isn't how we're supposed to do this, you know? And sometimes us being new with this stuff, not, we don't always know the right questions to ask staff on what is the proper procedure or proper guidelines into handling some of this stuff, so. I mean, it might be in all those pages of papers you gave me, but I haven't read them all yet.
You know, and especially on, we're going to, when we go to the next item, uh, council staff relations, work through the city manager when communicating with staff. Council, work through the city manager when communicating with staff. That sounds so clear, right? It's a, well, it's not quite that black and white, right? And the same thing with the gap I mentioned between the role of council and the role of staff. It sounds like there's just a very clear dividing line. Well, it's a little fuzzy, right? When you get into the day-to-day piece, but knowing the spirit of it and then maintaining the open communication, right? Being able to discuss, am I, is it okay if I do that, right? If I do that, what will the effects be, impacts be? And then utilizing each other that way, I think that's when you can take care of the ambiguity and not let that, uh, paralyze you or get you in a bad situation. Does that make sense for, for folks in terms of proceeding here? Okay, um, anything, any other issues, uh, around communication from the public? Any other issues that, you know, you're kind of not clear about or would like some clarification here?
I'm going to throw out one more thing, just really, you know, I, I know sometimes we hear from the public on, you know, and especially, this is, well, not especially, this is specifically to things that are not on the agenda. And we have, um, the public come in and speak about things that they would like the city to do something about. It's not always in the control of our city to do that. Is there an approach that we can take to respond, um, in either a written manner or something stating, we appreciate your comments for coming in and bringing it up to city council, however, this is not in what, what we work on. This isn't in our jurisdiction. And so that we can prevent from those, um, constituents to continue to come in and address us and, uh, utilize that time that maybe we could be using on other things for, you know, so that it's, it's more effective and just to let them know, we've heard you, but unfortunately, this is not something we can do anything about so that they don't feel ignored.
Right.
You know?
So, um, this is really the county's jurisdiction. This is the school district, right? The, the city doesn't have authority over that particular issue.
Correct, because oftentimes our constituents, our community members do not know. They, they simply do not know. I didn't know long time, you know, before I started showing up to some of these things and doing some of this stuff, I had no clue. So just having that open communication with our community.
And I, and I think each council member can do that, right? You, uh, 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 to the extent that you get educated around that, this is really a county issue and, um, uh, go see, uh, the housing department with the county or whatever the case may be, this is not a city issue. I like doing that because it's an education function and then they don't keep coming back asking for the same thing over and over again. That's good.
Yeah, I would, I would add, I've got one specific thought on that and one sort of larger thought on all this communication stuff of, of first, I think how I've been thinking about those sorts of issues for me is, you know, the, being in the mayor's seat, I think I have felt a more responsibility to respond to those sorts of things and respond to, you know, the, the concerns that I may not have had time to respond to as a council member, but just being in the chair, I'm like, well, someone needs to do this, so if I've got the title, then I should be doing it, which is a unofficial thing that's not in a handbook anywhere and doesn't mean other council members can't do that sort of thing, but I think is a somewhat useful practice of, you know, the job comes with more responsibility and part of that is being maybe some more of the first point of contact in some situations. That's just my, my thought on it that I've tried to put into place so far of, of, you know, saying, we maybe can't do this or how can I talk to you to get this on agenda? Or something like that. Or this is the purview of the California Horse Racing Board, um, specifically. Uh, in a larger sense, I think everything we've been talking about on this issue, all this communication stuff, I think highlights something about this first bit of, of what's the council's role versus what's staff's role of it's, it's important for us to know the difference between those roles, but it's also very useful and important for us to know, you know, to, to take a step back and not try and do staff's job for them, but know what staff is doing, know what that job entails and, you know, how they're doing it. Which is, I think, an important thing that we need to do because we are the first, first point of contact for so many people when they're thinking of city things. So we need to be able to say, well, I may not know all of the things, but I can direct you where you need to go or I know what's possible with the constraints we have. And that's, that's something I've talked about a lot. I've, uh, I, you know, I've mentioned before in this meeting that I draw on my personal experience being, as I like to say, a low-level government bureaucrat, uh, for the county previously of just knowing, you know, what's possible and what's not, but also just talking to Nicole and talking to staff. And, you know, it helps me understand when I'm like, well, there are all these things I want to do, but I know that Jeff is kind of the only person doing them in the planning department right now because we're a little low on staff and that's okay. And it means that, you know, that our expectations of timelines and things need to be adjusted because I know how the inner workings are happening, which I think is also really important from this communication standpoint because the public isn't seeing the difficulties there. And, and they're not seeing the difficulties, but they're also not seeing the, the positives. You know, we get the inside view and so we five know more than anyone in the community how much work Nicole is doing or other staff are doing. And so it's very important to, for us to acknowledge that and try and, and highlight it in these discussions with people because we have, we have the inside view. We're, we're in it up to our elbows and other people, there's just no way for them to get that. They're, it's impossible. They, they don't need to, they aren't in the same conversations, they're in the same meetings, they don't get all the emails, they, it's not their job. So it's, it's our job to explain it to some extent.
And I, it's such a great point because I had mentioned, staff needs to be politically astute, but not political. And council needs to be administratively astute, but not administrators, right? You need to know what's, what's going on there to make your decisions, but also to answer questions that you get from your constituencies and residents. So what's going on with that, all that construction out there? Mr. Mayor, what's going on out there? How come there's all this construction, right? Well, I don't know. Go ask staff, right? That's not a, that's not going to be a satisfying answer, but you do know because you're dealing with staff. As you say, you're up to the elbows and all of that. That's good. Go ahead, Rob.
I will say, I do appreciate the weekly city manager report because that, that does allow me to have useful bits of information for that week because those tend to be the pressing issues or concerns that general community members have. And I'm able to respond quickly to them or direct them to the right city department for them to find more information. For instance, when we got hit with the atmospheric river and just knowing where to tell community members to go, go, to go find sandbags, that made all the difference in the world for a lot of people. And, you know, that's just my way of thanking city staff, particularly city manager, for getting that information to us because that is very, very valuable for us to be able to share out. I know for me, like, social media is like my thing with constituent, and it allows me to get information out really quickly to folks and acknowledge, like, this is, this is a source. It came directly from the city. And if you need more information, this is where you can go.
Okay, any other communication issues?
You know me, Nicole.
It'll, it'll, something else will come to you, Jennifer, and just bring it up when it does.
Just bring it up, bring it up.
Okay, so there's a, a couple of other questions on staff-council relations. As I mentioned, how should council communicate with staff? What are those principles, norms, and behaviors? As I mentioned, the, one of the responses, work through the city manager when communicating with staff. Be respectful of staff's professional expertise and recommendations. It was mentioned at the very beginning. Trust was also mentioned, the second bullet to the end was mentioned earlier. Here it is. Trust and value staff's input and knowledge. Develop good working relationships with staff that's mutually supportive. Counsel avoids criticizing or undermining staff, especially in public. Meet with staff and ask questions before council meetings. Avoid surprising staff at meetings. As Nicole mentioned earlier, those are all A-plus answers. They're all A-plus answers. Good, anything to add on to that? Any questions about any of those? All make good sense? And what does council need from staff to be most effective? So staff, council's request, continue to make yourselves available to meet and answer questions before meetings. Be transparent and open with council. Help facilitates trust. Staff, provide council with information as early as possible. The weekly reports and any other information, not holding that information. Staff recognizes that council members are volunteers who have other jobs. That was mentioned earlier. Commitments and obligations and respecting that, respecting council's time. And here's an interesting one. The city manager should push back on council when warranted and needed. Questions at all?
Here, here.
That's always a wonderful request from council. And then sometimes it happened, not, not this council, but sometimes the city manager does push back and, oh, I requested that, but now it doesn't feel so good, right? Now I'm not so sure I should have requested that. Any questions?
That is, it is very important, I think, that role. And it's not obvious to all members of the, of the public why that should be or when it happens. I think it can throw some people off because I think the thought process for some people is, well, you know, the city council is in charge. They're, they're the elected officials. What they say goes, so staff shouldn't really, you know, be telling them what to do or pushing back on things. But to me, that, you know, while that sort of in a way is, is the de jour understanding of how government works, it's not the practical reality of, you know, we could talk for hours and say whatever we want, but it's not going to be effective and it's not going to get done if we don't have buy-in from the people who are actually doing it, which is staff. And so it's very important to, to me that, you know, if we're going off the deep end on something that is totally unrealistic or the timeline that we're suggesting is utterly infeasible or, you know, we're just off-topic or it's anything like that, it makes complete practical sense for Nicole to say, hey, no, this won't work. Like, that's just, that's just a, a thing that makes us more effective at doing our job, which I, I think is an important thing to understand about why that's important to be on this list.
Very good. The way I, I learned it is local government works when you can marry what is politically acceptable with what is administratively feasible. And it may be politically acceptable, but over here, we just can't do that, right? Given resources, constraints, or regulations or whatever, and being able to articulate that. So Nicole, any thoughts about this item here about pushing back? Are you comfortable doing that?
Yeah, some council members have experienced that. And I appreciate your willing to seek your way when I push back. Because I know that I won't, I won't do it unless necessary.
But we want you to. We're empowering you to.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yes. Please do.
And one of the reasons is it's not about me. It's about who, who else I'm responding on behalf of and how it affects their ability to function and be, you know, productive, contributing employee or department or related back to our core services and really just managing the limited resources we do to the degree practical and with a policy direction. So everything I've heard makes complete sense and is incredibly positive to receive.
And I just want to say, you know, I even also just taking that into, to perspective as well is like, you know, you might also, if it's something that might not be completely off the table, but here's the options, because that's something that we heard in the city, cities conferences, like, you know, city manager's job is like, okay, I understand you want to get this done. You can't do it this way, but let's see what we can make happen. What, what can we do rather than what we can't do? Because I also, you know, for, for me, I, you know, I look at things of different challenges, right? You know, okay, this, can't do this like this, then what can we do? How can we address it? How can, you know, where, where do we need to be? What are we trying to do? And something that I've brought up to, to you many times, and I think you guys have heard me say this several times too, is, you know, going, because we're so limited and stuff like that, but I also don't want that to be our constraint going forward. I don't want every answer to be like, we don't have money and we don't have staff. Then let's fix that. Let's figure out how to fix that so that we don't have to say, we can't do it because we don't have time or money. So, or staff or money, you know what I mean? So I just, I want to look at opportunities to grow that and, and not have to be so limited. I, I want to be able for us to grow and flourish together, so.
And, and council comes to staff or comes to the city manager and with requests, and every time it's, no, we can't do that. No, we can't do that. No, we can't do that. That's not going to fly. So the partnership, right? The joint problem-solving, we can't do that. But what we might be able to do is, right? And then it's becomes a creative, problem-solving conversation mutually supportive on both ends. Yeah, very good. Okay, Preston?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, part of what I've saw in the first years is to trim back the appetite of what the council asked staff to do, both in the advisory bodywork plans and in the strategic plan. And this comes from following the strategic plans for a decade or more before this, when I think politically, it's easy for each council member to say, well, I want this on the strategic plan, so I'm gonna let another council member put whatever they want on the strategic plan. And so you end up with this strategic plan that is really unworkable. I mean, I haven't heard staff say that specifically, but then when you look at two years later, what has been accomplished? And it's in the past, maybe 30% of the goals. And so I felt that the council isn't doing its job of making those hard, hard choices. And so I very much push for, you know, less is more. We gotta really do fewer things and then wait until staff have clearer direction on what to work on. And the same with the advisory bodies. And so in that regard, I'm, I'm, and I'm truly being guilty of transgressing this, but try not to bring up lots of new initiatives in between strategic plans because that can divert from the strategic plan. Now, that's hard because we do strategic planning once every two years. So it's, it's coming up. So think hard about what you want to advocate to have happen over the next two years.
I'll, I'll, I want to know what they want to get done. What's, you know, you go to those, I've, I've described this before. You go to the Chuck E. Cheese or something and you see those coins that keep getting pushed towards the edge. I, I want to know what coins are about to fall. What do we need to get? What do we need to do that's already so far down the pipeline that if we don't pull the trigger soon, it, we're gonna have to restart and do it all over again, waste more money and waste more city resources and waste, 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 waste? No, I want to see action, you know, so.
I, I would agree with you, Jen, but I would, I would offer up the, we also have the opportunity to throw a coin in on those places where things aren't going over the edge, where they need to go over the edge.
True, true.
I think one of the things for me really here is for my own, I like to be able to provide input on processes that are about to start so that I don't have to worry at the end of the process, well, wait, did they think about this or did they look at this? Because I recognize, again, as council members, by the time it gets to us, we don't want to have to put staff or the consultant or the community in a position where like, well, wait a second. Did you explore this? Go spend another two years doing this, right? And so I think one of the things I would really value is the opportunity, particularly making sure that we're given some, the opportunity to really say, what am I looking for, this study or this report? So that there's a chance that that's incorporated into the contract that's signed. It's incorporated into the decision-making process on who you select as the consultant doing the work. As a consultant, my least favorite thing to hear is, oh, we're gonna pause the project for six months. We're gonna find money to do this thing that just came up because council is very interested in this suddenly. And that can completely destroy any momentum in a project. And so I want to make sure that I'm not one of those council members. I do want to make sure that things are being addressed, but I think for me, that's most effective in providing that early and frequent input. Because again, at some point, we just need to be able to make a decision, so.
Very good. Anything else just on that topic?
I would just say too that something that does allow us as council members to be effective from city staff is reminding us what is allowable to, within reality. I'm a person that loves to like just bring up all these big, wonderful ideas and being able to be grounded in like, okay, well, this is reality. This is what we have in the general fund. Or this is the bandwidth that we currently have, or this is how much staff we have in this specific department. We're gonna need more of this and more of that before we can even talk about X, Y, and Z. And I think that enables us to be all the more effective when we're reminded what the reality of the situation is. Because sometimes we, you know, I think it's not just us council members, but any, any human, just like if they have a great idea, they're ready to share it. You know, and case in point, like, a group had approached me about a potential opportunity that I brought to city manager's attention. And the city manager brought us back to reality. Like, well, don't know if we, if this is necessarily possible, but that also allowed additional conversation to happen with folks who were on that group who also realized, okay, there's a lot more labor and human power that's required to see this project through or this idea through. So let's put this on the back burner and not waste anyone's time around this anymore. And so, again, that, that's an example, but I think in a broad sense, that's what makes council effective when we're reminded of what the reality of the situation is.
Very good. So to my left is the reality check over here. Reality check over here. Very good. Okay, I do want to just mention, Preston mentioned the strategic plan and how important that is for creating discipline and focus, right? So you're not chasing, right, all these ideas, all these great ideas, right, and are over here. But that gives you that discipline and focus and how important strategic planning is. The last item, what can council do to support staff's effectiveness? Counsel should recognize their policymaking role and avoid moving into staff's role in day-to-day operations. Counsel can help staff by making timely decisions, as Preston mentioned, not pushing them off or delaying them. Counsel can help staff by giving clear direction. And council should be respectful of staff's time and the need for work-life balance. Anything else you would add? Isabel, Nicole, Anne, anything you would add that council could do that would help you and your, your colleagues? Not that there needs to be, it's a pretty darn good list here.
I think it's a very complete list and, yeah. To me, as I'm listening to you talking and I'm thinking of our, our role as staff, I'm, I'm, I'm just so delighted to, to hear you, you know, speak about, you know, being helpful and acknowledging the staff, the staff's work and time and, and the need for life balance, work-life balance. So that's very, very nice. Thank you.
And if I do interrupt you on the weekend, my apologies. It's because I work 24/7. Sometimes I forget it's Saturday.
If you don't mind, I'll share Preston. Preston will maybe compose an email on Saturday night, 11:00 PM, but he'll send it, he'll set it up to send it at 8:00 AM on Monday morning, something along those lines. Part of the respect he's...
Yeah, yeah, it's a great, it's a great feature that Google brought in. For the first time I saw it, I was like, why would you need that? Then I got the second job and I was like, oh, this is why you need that.
Outlook has that as well. Outlook has that in the future.
Very good.
It's something we're training all of our staff to do.
Oh, nice. I really do send it. And what time do you train them to, to send it?
Eight in the morning is when they're allowed to start.
Eight in the morning, yeah.
You can compose an email whenever you want, but the rest of the staff doesn't know until what time you're awake or that you're working on a Saturday.
Right, you need to be awake when they get it.
Well, and the scary part is you send somebody an email at 11:00 PM on a Saturday night, staff member, and they respond at 11:31, right? It's like, oh, my goodness. Okay, last question. Robin brought this up. How should you address each other outside of, of public meetings? You're at a community event, for example? How do you, how do you want to be addressed? We have Her Majesty over here, Jennifer.
Empress.
Empress, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you have a preference or does it matter?
Hey, you.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
Do you, is it more, is the culture more formal where you use council member Jordan, council member Lopez? Is it first names? Is that...
I mean, for me personally, I, I don't mind being addressed as just Jen or Jennifer, whatever you, you know. So I, that doesn't bother me in the least bit, so.
Yeah, I've been called either Preston or Jordan depending upon who's famous at any particular time. I do make a habit of referring to other council members when I'm talking to somebody else formally, rather than by first name.
Yep, that makes sense. Any thoughts on that, Erin? Any preferences for you?
No, I think, I think Preston's about right of, you know, if I just see any of you, I'm gonna call you by your first name. But if I'm referring to you to a constituent or to, you know, another elected official from a neighboring jurisdiction, I would probably, you know, say, say your title at some point so that they know that it's there. I think it's important to, you know, introduce you in the context. it's important to, you know, introduce you in the context, given what's being talked about.
Yeah, makes sense. Robin, any preference for you?
No, I just, I only brought it up because I wanted to make sure, you know, that folks at least had an opportunity to make clear if they had preference for how they wanted to be addressed when we're in public spaces or gatherings, that they at least be provided that space. Me personally, I'm not too concerned whether someone calls me council member Lopez or Robin in public, but on, you know, very similar, I guess, to carbon copy both of your responses that, when I am in other public formal settings, I do want to do just effort to make sure and acknowledge that you are a fellow elected official, and I would just hope that extended mutually both ways. Just, you know, to mean to also ensure that no one ever feels like they're being belittled, whether intentionally or unintentionally, I think that kind of speaks to that whole concept of collegiality as well.
And it's a, and, and you're asking because you want to be respectful of your colleagues, which is a great question to ask. John, any preference for you?
So, I, I think I would agree that in, when being introduced and/or in more of a formal conversation, that, you know, using council member or vice mayor or mayor is helpful. I really appreciate, I think in our first meeting, I think Preston, you asked Jen how she wanted to be referenced, councilwoman or councilmember, and I, you know, like, in the back of my head, I was wondering that, you know, like, and I appreciated that you were open right away to ask that question, because I think it is important for certain people, it really matters to them. I had an interesting conversation with a staff member where they said council member Mickey, and then they very quickly corrected themselves, said vice mayor, says, oh, I don't mind, you can just call me John, and the staff member said, you know, I, I appreciate that, I may take advantage of that, however, I'm, at all times, that person said they're going to try and practice that they always say vice mayor or council member, so when in an actual council meeting, they don't accidentally refer to me in, in a manner that others might not find respectable. Like, I, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with it, but others might, so. I also recognize that I will have to get used to people calling me council member or vice mayor, instead of just John.
I, I've, I've worked with staff members and the council member will say, call me Robin, okay, council member Lopez. It's just built in, it's just, they just can't stop themselves from doing it, right?
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah, in that regard, I, I try to use staff's title, because I've seen the asymmetry of staff being referred to by first name and not the opposite, so I don't know, I don't know what your preference is, I don't know if you care one way or the other, but do you have a preference?
You know, we've been fairly casual about that. Some interesting.
I mean, because I think it's, it's, to me, it also reinforces these roles are bigger than us, we just inhabit them for the short time that we do. Yeah, I haven't asked, do each of you prefer council member or councilman?
I, I prefer council member, because I feel like it's more inclusive.
Sure, yeah.
Or councilperson.
Or councilperson, yes.
Okay.
Council member's fine for me.
Okay.
But, but Preston, it would be vice mayor, by the way.
I already blew it once today.
The, the yearly shuffling really makes it much more difficult.
Keeps us on our toes.
Yeah, it's like, who are you again?
Okay, we have worked through our agenda and we've accomplished our goals for the, the session here, so we're ready to wrap up. It's been great working with you all, it's, I, I mentioned in the interviews, in my own humble way, what my work is, is trying to make local government work and work well, and I'm just very pleased that I had an opportunity to work with you all, and I see a very highly functioning council and a very highly functioning council-staff relation, so it's very encouraging to me. I'm going to go home happy tonight. Mr. Mayor, if you have any comments, or Nicole, any, actually Nicole, and you can close us out, and I think we do have public comment here. Nicole, any concluding thoughts?
I think I've really already expressed everything that I wanted to convey to the council, and again, just recognizing, you know, we got a little bit deep in the staff roles here, respecting your roles and what you're bringing as elected officials, I know, I'm not living it, but I see it and I've experienced it, how challenging it can be at times, and I, I don't even see all of it. So what you're receiving in day in and day out, knowing that I will work that gap continuously with staff, understand there's a lot more to this on all sides, and so just respecting that, and my door, my phone, my email is wide open, so when questions come up, I'm right here, even if it's virtually, I will always be available to you as needed, so I just want to reiterate that, and again, thank you for your time today, so, so well spent from my perspective. And no public comment.
I just want to know why we didn't get to use the whiteboard and all those sticky notes. What the heck, man?
That was instill fear in us. Fear that we're going to have to go up there and write.
So, so just in the spirit of transparency, so if there was some issues around the council norms, principles, and values, I'd actually have you write the ones that you want to go into, to get codified on post-it notes, and then we'd sort through that, but I did not get that sense at all, I felt like you were all pretty much on board with those, and so, yeah, I made an in-the-moment judgment not to do the post-it note activity.
Nice, I like it.
Was that, was that okay?
I just, I, you know, curiosity killed the cat.
I know.
Yeah.
And then, and then, just in case on the flip chart, just in case there was some reason to do it, and if we did do the post-it note activity, we would have put them on the flip chart.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's where that was.
I was totally waiting for that, I was like, when's it going to happen?
And Anne has them set up so nicely here.
Yes, I love the turquoise.
Next time, we'll do the post-it note, and you get, you get the turquoise. Very good.
So Sean, if I, I could ask, because grade inflation is a thing, I mean, you've been, you've been complimentary.
Yes.
But I do want to reality test that, that might be a facilitator trope to kind of build up a better culture on, is it a trope?
When you say a trope?
A trope, that you've been complimentary about how we're interacting, how we're interacting with staff.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
So there, if I didn't say anything, I would not say, council, you really have issues and you're dysfunctional and you need help, I would not say that, but I would not say, you're working well together. So the fact that I said it, it's meaningful, if I didn't say that, next time I, if you call me back to do it and I don't say that, then you should register that.
Okay.
I'm telling you something by not giving you the compliment.
Okay.
But it is genuine and sincere, and I've worked with other cities that are well-run, and I'll just throw one out, because I worked with them last Thursday, Sunnyvale, down in Santa Clara County, I've worked with them for several years, very well-governed, well-managed city, and I compliment them. I'll work with a neighboring city right next to them, and I will not tell them that they're well-governed and well.
I've been following that city a little bit.
And well-managed, exactly. So I, it's, it's genuine and sincere. So Nicole and I have had a chance to talk a little bit, you know, obviously, as we're leading up to this, and I, I shared the interview summary with her, and we both, we're both saying, wow, this is a really great, this is excellent input from the council, and not that I'm, you know, the expert here, but they get it, they understand how local government works and how it should work, and all I'm going off is what you all told me, and it all seemed genuine, sincere, and legitimate from your perspective, so it's a genuine heartfelt compliment.
And I just want to say a compliment to you, I really enjoyed, you know, working with you one-on-one in the Zoom session, as well as here, you really do have a very thoughtful approach at really listening and examining everything that is being said to you and re-iterating it to us and saying, is this what you said to us, and is this what I understood? And, and I certainly appreciate that, obviously, it's within your job description, but I think that you do a very, very good job at it.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you. It's been great spending a couple hours with you all.
Thank you.
So I think we're ready to close out the meeting.
Great, well, I'll close out by thanking you, Sean, for facilitating, and staff for being more involved with this than maybe you expected in the actual discussion of it, and also everybody on council, I just, you know, it's weird that once we are on council, I feel like we get to discuss these things less than beforehand, you know, I, at least when Preston and I were elected, the, the very odd experience of talking every day about our approach to everything, and then not talking very much because of the Brown Act, so it's very unique and refreshing to have this chance and to have everybody be very honest and open about their thoughts on these things, and I think it's very important and useful. With that, I think we will adjourn slightly over two hours, which I'm going to say doesn't break my streak, I'm going to blame it on you, that's on your streak. Next meeting, under two hours, I guarantee it. And thank everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy.